Alright, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you uh for being here. Um we're gonna call this meeting to order on January ninth and it is about six thirty-three. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. Roll call, Mr. Aguilar, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Here.
Councilmember Lordmore?
Here.
Councilmember Desari?
Here.
Mayor Potem Plot?
Here.
Mayor with me?
Here. Thank you. And tonight's dedication will be presented by Pastor Dennis Morales of Calvary Chapel Eastville.
Good evening. Alright, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much, Lord, for this day and we invoke your presence this evening. Lord, your word says that we devise plans, but Lord, you direct our steps and we just pray for your way and we pray for your plan. We pray, Lord, for your wisdom upon our city council members, Lord God. We thank you for them. We thank you, Lord, for their families. Continue to protect them and guide them. We thank you, Lord, for their heart just to build bridges for our city, Lord God, and as they continue, Lord, just to pursue, to keep our city safe, Lord, and and uh Lord, to be the best place to live in in the U.S., Lord God. We just thank you so much, Lord, for the city staff and for all those here, Lord. We just pray that you just bless them, their families, Lord God. We continue to pray for our law enforcement, our first responders, Lord, uh families of uh uh those that are uh on the front lines serving to protect our our country, Lord, and we just thank you so much, Lord, for this day and we just give it to you now. We thank you and we praise you. It's in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Morales. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Jocelyn Yao, please.
Please stand. Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Real quick, I'm gonna go off script for just a second, but uh for those of you that don't know, today is National Law Enforcement Day. Uh before we get into our our agenda, I just wanted to say thank you to um those that are here protecting us, especially from the Eastville Police Department um on this National Law Enforcement Day, so thank you as well as those that protect us in other areas. For those of you that don't know, uh one of our council members is also a uh an active duty law enforcement officer, so thank you very much. Um and even though it is National Law Enforcement Day, we do um we really appreciate not only our law enforcement, but also our first responders and our fire department. So thank you to to everyone. So thank you. Item number three additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mr. Aguilar, are there any changes requested?
We've had no requests.
Would the council like to make any changes or revisions? Alright, moving on to item number four. I'd like to uh presentations and announcements. I'd like to invite Felicia Chin up to the speakers podium who will provide an update on the Eastville Public Library.
Good evening, your mayor and city councilman. As we head into the new year, I wanted to give some last updates of the library of ton twenty eighteen. First, the library would like to announce that we had hired one of our own Eleanor Roosevelt High School students, Safa Basravi. She is a junior at the school, can speak both Urdu and Hindi, and is part of Roosevelt's A S B. We hope that the community welcomes Safa to the library. Second, our winter reading program is well underway. Uh participants can claim up to two prizes from books to food vouchers. For last year's event, we had one hundred twenty-three kids, twenty-four adults sign up. We are hoping to have these same numbers, if not more, for this year. There are many more prizes to claim, and so stop by and sign up. The last day to claim all prizes is on the twelfth. On December fifteenth, we had an annual Gingerbread House event. We had a total of thirty-five children participate. It was considered to be one of our biggest events of the year. It turned out to be a very successful event. We also have a cocoa-to-go event that is scheduled to be on the twentieth uh the twenty-third of this month from four to seven P.M. The first twenty patrons can check out who check out five items will receive a hot cocoa-to-go on their way out. All are welcome to participate. Lastly, be sure to stop by for next week for a fun teen craft week where teens can learn how to make colorful and funky charms. We hope to see you there. Uh was there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four point two. Um is an update on the Limonite Avenue I fifteen interchange update update by Mr. Dennis Green. Mr. Green, will you please come to the speakers podium?
You got it. It's getting sweeter as the days go by. Thank you, Mayor. Alright, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and Happy New Year. It's the first time in your new facility. I I went over to the old one first and I called Olivia and said, where are you guys? They said, we're in our new one. I said, I'm here early enough, I'll be right there.
We hired the best project manager. We got a project done quickly.
Wait, alright. I'll remember that, Brian. Anyway, we have a great team on this project and working with your staff uh to do the outreach and the communication we think are going very well. We get very few complaints and when they do, when they come in from Joe or Brian, we're right on it, the entire team. We jump right on and usually turn around and respond within twenty-four hours. Am I correct, Brian?
He's usually within five to ten minutes, so if I text him or call him, he's calling me right back and taking care of it, so.
And that's what we promised the community. So what we're doing right now, I'm really excited to be a part of this project that we're delivering to this community. And I've been in construction since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been in this part of the uh world handling construction outreach. And what occurred on this job a month or so ago, I have not seen occur in all of my career. This team put together, we had two nights, minimum of two nights, to put up the temporary support system for the bridge called false work. And you usually close one direction of the freeway, which we had put out to do. You close it down, we put the detour, build that half, put the stringers across the freeway. The next night, you come back and do the other direction and then you're ready to start building the bridge, which is where we are right now. And this team did it in one night, both directions. That's putting in two traffic control systems, taking them up and opening the road within the prescribed hours given by Caltrans. I've never seen that in my entire career and I've been doing that since nineteen eighty-nine. So this team is committed to delivering this project on time and meeting all the challenges that we face. So this team, I'm confident we're gonna deliver. Where we are right now, as a matter of fact, I have a couple of short notice closures coming up that we contacted your staff today and what's happening now is there's so much work in the inland empire going on right now, if you're involved in the industry. There's uh two things are going on. Trying to get a striper out to re-stripe your projects is only a limited number of striping contractors and it's hard to get them right now. Once you schedule them and if you can't deliver because of rain, inclement weather, they don't come back the next night because they're supposed to be somewhere else the next night. So we're working around all of that, the same with concrete. How many of you heard Robertson advertising on the radio for there's so much work going on trying to get concrete on your jobs? They can hardly deliver to all of the work that's going on in the inland empire. Any direction that you travel, you're seeing roadwork, correct? And that's taking this product and limiting and straining the resources that were available. We haven't seen this in a number of years. So where we are, I'm happy to let you know and late notice that on the fifteenth and seventeenth next week, we're gonna actually start pouring the bottom portion of the bridge, of the new bridge, the new half. Two nights to pour it. Once we start pouring, we cannot stop until we finish that night's work. So we have to close the lanes because we have to pour on the top. Well, in order for the concrete trucks to get in and pour, they have to be in the lanes that are open. They can't be on the lanes that are closed. So we're gonna be closing the fifteenth and the seventeenth. We expect two nights if we can get it done in one, but I kinda doubt it. It's a lot of concrete that has to go all the way across and you have to go up to the pour break before you stop pouring and then continue on the next night. So we're gonna be pouring. I'm happy to to tell you that we're gonna be pouring the bottom portion of that bridge. Very important, once we get that poured, then whatever utilities need to go inside, go inside the bridge. Then we're ready to pour the deck and then wrap the job up, put on the rails, and then open that up and repeat the process on the north bridge. So we're halfway done, almost halfway there. We're making very good progress. The rain, the only challenge that we have that we cannot control. Unless some of you know an anti-rain dance? Does anybody know one? I've heard of rain dance, but never an anti-rain dance. We have rain projected this weekend, coming in Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. This may delay my work. And I can't do anything about that, but be thankful that we're getting the water. But once we do that, then I won't be able to give a two or three week notice the first time I can get back in to do the work. You understand? We will contact your staff immediately, but if the rain delays me next week, I can't wait for two more weeks to give you a notice. I I need to get this bridge built. And that's the challenge we face. You may get short notice due to inclement weather that we can't control and the first time we can get the resources available, we're gonna go. We're gonna notify you, come out and face you. I've been working with the businesses. Christmas Tree Farm, uh they were happy. I'm, we worked with them. We put up additional signs for the Christmas Tree Farm. I mean, you saw the signs that we put up when they contacted me. The pumpkin patch, we went and had the signs put up, opened up the road, made it available to their customers and and the manager told me they did pretty well. And I said, next year, you don't have to worry, we'll be out of here. So so anyway, we, that's where we are right now. Our webpage, how many of you have been to the webpage? And you've seen the live streaming videos? You can watch the work and we've told all of the contractors, employees, expect to be watched. So if you do anything out of order, somebody's gonna call and we're gonna be right down your throat. So don't take any chances out there. It's a very good job. The other thing you can help us with is we've had a lot of break-ins. Of the contracted equipment has been stolen from our site on the westbound direction in our yard. We've had uh some very expensive equipment taken, so anybody that can help us, we've talked to the police and they're helping us as much as they can. When you write a report or something, park near, so to show a little bit of uh presence. But they're not only us, the other I fifteen job are having the same problems. Uh material and heavy equipment are being stolen off of the jobs at night or the weekends when we're not working. And this is just part of what's happening in the industry right now and in the world. So other than that, we have a very good project. I'm glad to be a part of it, to deliver it to this community, and then we'll finish this one, move on to the next one, and it will be sweet when it is complete. Thank you very much, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
I'm I'm glad to see that you're one day ahead of schedule and uh I'm, what kind of uh on site security do you guys have?
Well, the contractor has brought in the dino boxes. They put the locks on them, but they're coming in with power tools, so he's not rented a person to be on site because that can work for you and it gets you also unless they're armed and they don't really like to do that. So we're just, they've actually taken most of the expensive equipment off the site, which then impacts us because now we have to carry it back and forth every time we need it.
You guys don't have uh uh cameras or anything like that?
We have cameras and we've and we're positioning the cameras that are out there, but when they come out, they come out with hoodies on and dark clothing and the resolution of a camera at night, unless you have a well-lit area, is not enough for enforcement purposes.
I know I know they have the type that are actually uh once the motion sensor goes off, it actually sends out a signal.
Well, we'll be talking about the contractor, but he's looking at cost effectiveness with the project because it was a tight bid.
And all the equipment's insured, so.
Correct, but it does delay the job to get replacement equipment.
Alright. Alright, sir.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I have a quick question. Are we on schedule or what does our schedule of completion look like for the project?
Next year? Well, because of the landscaping that was added, we'll be early into twenty twenty for landscaping. The the plan is right now to have traffic on the new bridge come up substantial completion before Thanksgiving of next year. And by December, we've got to have traffic on that bridge and not impact the holiday season, although work, the added work will continue. Now, the only thing that delays more is every day the contractor cannot work because of rain. We have to add that time onto the back end of the contract. And there's no, every job in the world is like that. When it's inclement weather, Caltrans will not allow you to close the lane on wet pavement. It's unsafe. So barring the weather, we're gonna make it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Plot, is is the contractor, is Falcon Engineering, correct?
Falcon, we're the construction management firm that I work for, but the contractor is Atkinson and Sons is the actual construction contractor.
I can I can give you someone that could probably help with your security issue and I can, I can send you a lead to have someone, have one of their people talk to a company that can, that does off-site security, but it's all remote stuff, so.
I would sure appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely.
Anything you can do, the community can do to help us, that helps the job, help us get out of here quicker.
Alright, we'll we'll talk offline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And just last, with all the the delays and last minute delays, we really appreciate your communication and your communication with our communications team. I know they do an excellent job with getting that information out there as soon as possible. Those of you that are here, um if you have any uh questions or wanna be up to date, make sure that, and I don't wanna put a plug in too early for our our communications, but make sure you're following us on all the social media feeds. Our communication team does a great job with Mr. Green's team to to communicate that to the residents and businesses in the area, so.
It's a pleasure working with your team and we're covering the whole corridor, not only us, the I fifteen. We all one big family, wanting to build these projects and then get out of town. That's our goal.
Thank you.
Alright.
Item number five, student liaison report. Uh Mr. Brian Medina, please.
Good evening. I know it's been a while, but it's been extremely crazy. But to begin with, River Heights is hosting their Science and Engineering Expo, Monday, January twenty-eighth at six P.M. It's a conjoined thing with also Augur Ramirez and River Heights was recognized for being the C N U S D intermediate school with the greatest reduction in chronic attendance for the most reporting, recent attendance reporting period, which was all of second trimester. R H I S is proud to have three students selected to present their original poetry at the C N U S D liter literacy conference. Special articulation activities to support eighth graders from transitioning into Eleanor Roosevelt will begin this year within this month. Harada and all the other all real all year round schools are now in session starting this past Monday. A B C tracks are all in session while D is still out. Uh Harada will be having a mobile dairy assembly track for tracks B and C. They'll be having an Eppet Kids event after school. Uh they'll be having their beginning bands for tracks B and C begin. Uh Dr. Jensen wanted to announce that she has her coffee with principals on one, say, the sixteenth and they will also be doing their sixth grade panoramic picture. For Eleanor Roosevelt High School Boys Rugby, it's fundraising on an app called Blast Athletics and the funds of the fundraiser will be used to pay for the field because since it's not a sanctioned sport within our district, they do have to pay for all of their par- practice and game times at Silver Lakes and also all of their equipment. Wrestling just won the Black Watch Tournament title and they had three boys that won individual championships, Brandon Leon, Nitifort Tambukam, and Adrian Ledesma, as well as a runner-up finishing from Isaiah Vazquez, along with the third place of Thomas Orr and Joel Young. And in eighth place was David Seind. Uh Eleanor Roosevelt received the grant to start up again for, since the last time it was three years ago, the program Every Fifteen Minutes and the scheduled date for the actual event will be March seventh and eighth. Uh Every Fifteen Minutes is an event or um something that is caused to raise awareness against drunk driving, but this year, Every Fifteen Minutes at Roosevelt, it's gonna be not only drunk driving, but any type of driving under the influence, so they're gonna show with smoking or vaping or any of that sort. They also announced our Staff of the Year in the last week of school, which for the classified staff, it was Enrique Canio, who's been a security guard for a very long time with us. He is loved by the entire student body. And our Teacher of the Year was Crystal Hernandez. She is moving on to District Teacher of the Year. Uh she's a teacher that teaches special ed students and shelter students where in the Language Arts Field. And for the sports that are scheduled this week are tomorrow, we have girls freshman basketball at Norco, boys freshman basketball at home, girls varsity water polo versus Santiago at home, JV soccer versus Norco at home, junior varsity basketball at Norco, junior varsity basketball boys at home, and junior varsity soccer at Norco. And this is all for tomorrow. And for the eleventh, they will have varsity water polo at the Diamond Bar Winter Classic Tournament and co-ed varsity wrestling at Temecula Valley Battlefield. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Great job, thank you. Item number six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Aguilar, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have the first public comment speaker being Keith White.
Mr. White.
I'm Eastville resident, I live over at Swan Lake. Um there's a problem, um we have the bus stops too far apart. We have one at Hamner fifty-eighth going southbound. So we had just had Hamner riding. There's a sign that says ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for a mobile home. Why can't we get a bus stop right diagonally across from there going northbound? Because with me, I'm having to wheel myself all the way from to the time and that's a good long, that's a good long push. And we have two stops already so close together. You have one right there, Vons. When you turn the corner, then you have one ninety-hundred feet away at two to the time. That doesn't make sense. And I spoke to RTA, RTA says I'd tell the city, test the city, because I had a good permission from the city. But why can't we get a bus stop over there, pass the light, then we pass Swan Lake and get a stop there because we do have other people at Swan Lake that do take the bus. And the problem is, is you have to stop right across the Hamner fifty-eighth. Why can't they put one going northbound? So I'd like to see to try and put a stop over there, pass the light. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Plot?
The question of your location of the bus stop is, you're saying just no going northbound, north of fifty-eighth on Hamner, correct?
Correct. If you, if you pass the Swan Lake light.
Yep.
Okay, so you pass the light, you can go, a bit further up, there's a yellow sign right there. I'm just, I'm trying to use a thing, I have the picture, but there's, I'm trying. And this yellow sign says, no homes for sale for ninety-nine thousand nine hundred, whatever. Right there, you have to stop right across from there. And right now, I had a couple of bus drivers calling in just to get a courtesy stop for me. And I spoke to the drivers, they're saying that there's like three or four or five hundred people that do get off there. And then one morning, I saw somebody get off where they had the bench before the light and they moved the bench back by two to the time. And like I said, you have those stops too close together. It's just such a far distance from we got two to the time, you gotta go pretty far distance to go to Swan Lake. So but if I, we can just stop right there and then that way I can just come to Swan Lake and I'm facing traffic and then it makes it a lot easier and for me, it gets to my house.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, our next speaker is Mason Sube.
Good evening. Um my name is Mason Sube. I've lived in Eastville for just about a year now. Um right where we live on Hellman and Chandler, you guys are gracious enough to put in a new elementary school. I was wondering if there are plans to expand Hellman uh to make it easier of a ride because it gets very congested in the mornings. And my second concern is, I'm visually impaired. There's not a single bus route within forty-minute walk of my house. So I'm wondering, is there plans to increase public transit in the city of Eastville? Thank you.
Thank you. The next, next public comment?
Yes, it's Larry Latinwu. Uh good evening. Uh my name is Larry Latinwu and I've been a resident of Eastville for the past eighteen years. Uh lately on my street, code enforcement has been giving tickets, uh parking tickets for street sweeping days. Uh I went and checked the, where they placed the parking, uh the the signs is at the entrance of each, you know, different areas in each neighborhood. I mean, someone that's driving will have a problem seeing any of the sign. You know, I can understand if the signs are put on your streets and also they give you an option of way to park your vehicles. But in the entire neighborhood, there's no option. And the street sweeping is from eleven to four. I can't even come home and say, let me quickly park and get something from there, from my house. You know, we need this thing to be resolved. Code enforcement never enforced this throughout the eighteen years. The last two months, I've gotten two tickets. I don't have any option of where to park. So I would like city council to look into this, into how to give people options of where to park while we have this street sweeping. Five hours is a long time to be out of your house. You know, my, two of my kids came back from college and within a week, they got tickets. There's no place to park in the entire neighborhood. So this issue needs to be resolved. And that, you know, that's why I'm here. I have a, I don't know, I have a uh like a copy of my neighborhood. In the entire neighborhood, there's no place to park. You know, the uh, you know, the sign covers the entire neighborhood. Unless I go to park at Aberdeen or here and walk home, almost like five miles. So we need that to be resolved. Code enforcement never enforced this because it's not practical. You know, you can, you have to give people options of where to park, you know, close to your house. So that's why I'm here. Do you need me to pass this around, you know? And it's like that in all the neighborhoods. They we, they never enforced it.
If you'd like, you can, you can give that to the clerk and uh we can take a look at that. Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, next uh public comment, please.
Yes, the next public comment card was received from Eddie Torres.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council, city staff, and Eastville residents. My name is Eddie Torres, field rep for Assemblymember Cervantes. Happy New Year to everybody. It's been a while. And I'm proud to announce that because of her economic achievements this past two years, Assemblymember Cervantes has been uh appointed to the Committee of Jobs and Economic Development on the economy. And we are looking forward to working with the business community of Eastville very closely. And I also have flyers posted on the back table and we have four events in January so far. We have one coming up this Friday. It's a lunch and learn workshop with South Coast, South Coast Air Quality Management District. If you have an electric car, it's pretty uh pertinent if you want to attend to learn more information about programs available for electric car owners. And with that, I'd just like to say it's it's good to be back and we hope to work closely with uh the the new, the new city mayor, the new city council, and the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um real quick, before we go on, just going back to the the previous comment um that was shared, can we see if code enforcement can just kind of share with them about parking situations and um kind of the reason of enforcing and how it's set up and just so that the resident kind of understands that?
Yes, I can, I can give my card.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, please.
That concludes public comment.
Alright. Yeah, sure, go ahead and Councilmember Plot.
I hope I pronounced it right. You said Mazin. Do you, do you by chance, out of curiosity, I represent Do you, do you by chance, I, out of curiosity, I, representative for RTA, so the, the board of directors for RTA. Do, do you by chance use Dial-a-Write at all as well, or no? And, and if so, did they service? I was gonna call you tomorrow, but I'll, I'll hear it right here on his ass.
Yeah, I, I used it a few times. However, uh, it's very, you have to plan it ahead. Like, okay, let me go down to Target, let me walk down the street and get on the bus, just go. Um, so its use is very planned. So I, I would like to see future planning of being able to just spontaneously say, okay, I need to go to Albertans. Okay, go out, walk, get on a bus and get there.
And, and just in particular, whereabouts at Hellman?
One second, sorry, councilmember Pla, can you come up to the speakers podium, just because it's recorded, if you can just speak into the microphone, please? Whereabouts on Hellman?
So I live off of Chandler and Hellman, uh.
Okay, yeah, part of, you know, part of what we do, you know, part of what we do in RTA is when we look for new routes or different stops, you know, there's a lot of, um, anecdotal equations that go into play, how many people are gonna stop that to you, to take a bus to an extra stop? How many ridership are gonna use that stop and going into it? But in that area, luckily, part of the good news is that there is development going on in there, so you can almost justify uh, new things that are happening. So I, I will take that information and, and get back to you on that.
I appreciate that and again, thank you guys for everything you guys are doing. I have seen within the past year such a great improvement in the area, so I just wanted to relay that message as well. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes public comments. We're moving on to item number seven, the consent calendar. All matters of the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Aguilar, are there any items that staff has requested or any members of the public that have requested to be polled?
We've had no requests.
Council, is there anything that you would like to poll? I'm looking for a motion.
So I moved. Second.
Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Yell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lormore.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari. Mayor Pretend Pla.
Yes.
Mayor Rigby.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Moving on to item number eight, public hearings, and we'll move right along since we don't have any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, city council business. We will start with item nine point one, small cell design preapproval, and that will be by Ms. Vega, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, as you will recall, you recently adopted an ordinance establishing, uh, permit requirements for small cells in the public right-of-way. As a part of that ordinance, there's a provision for design preapproval of the small cells uh, by the city council. If, uh, a particular installation is, uh, con- conforms to a preapproved design, then they're eligible for a streamlined permit. Uh, so tonight we have some requests from Verizon and AT&amp;T for the city council to consider proposed designs for preapproval. Um, and with that, I think I will turn this over first to Verizon since they've only got one, one design that they're asking for you to consider and then then we'll allow AT&amp;T to come up and we have representatives from, um, both, both companies here this evening. Um, so Sharon, uh, Sharon, if you want, wanna come up? And they have presentations prepared.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council, my name is Sharon Mile and I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And Verizon is pleased to be able to have the opportunity to submit our small cell design on city streetlights for a council review. I, I prepared a presentation which, um, mimics the exact package that we submitted to the council for approval. But I've highlighted, um, on the screen so that either members of the community or the public as well as the council will be able to view the presentation. And, and what I'd like to do is to walk you through the design and then I can take any questions that, that you have and please feel free to interrupt me at any time as I go through the design. Um, so, so Verizon is proposing two technologies on a single streetlight. Um, four G is our, our basic technology. And then five G, I'm sure everyone has heard that five G is coming and, and it's the, the path to the future. So as a result of that, Verizon is showing two technologies on one pole with the, um, expectation that we may initially only install four G. But we will structurally build and load the pole. That as five G becomes available, we can just add the five G technology. And, and again, as a result of that, I wanted council to be able to see what the design would look like with the installation of, of both technologies. Uh, the, the first slide that I'm showing, I don't know if everyone can see it, if it's large enough or if I can make it larger. But at the very top of the pole, there is what's called a two-foot cantina, antenna. Can everyone see where that is on, on the, um, on the slide? I can, I can move it forward, I think it's a little larger, it's a different angle. So, so the very top is a two-foot cantina antenna. And it's enclosed within a canister that is fourteen point five inches wide by two feet tall. And, and again, it, it camouflages the antenna and, and has a, a covering over it. And directly below that two-foot antenna are what we call remote radio units or radios. So every single small cell needs power, antennas, fiber and, and remote radios. So there's really four components that make up an average small cell. And so straight below that are, are four G radios. And the four G radios are fifteen inches high by thirteen point two inches wide. And we're going to need two of them, so two of them are, are reflected there in that photo sim. Directly below that, we have our five G radio and antenna. And, and the difference in the technology before, between four G and five G is that four, five G, it's, it, it's one piece of equipment or one unit. And within that unit, you have your radio and you have your antenna. And, and we call that in, in the wireless world, an integrated unit. So it contains both the antenna and the radios. The, the four G, I mean, I'm sorry, the five G, um, canister or, or radio is, um, two feet high by one feet wide. And if council is interested, I can go over the actual heights that each of the equipment will stay on the pole, if, if that's of interest to you. Okay, the, the total weight of all of the equipment is about a hundred and seventy-five pounds. Total. And, and then for power, which is another one of the four components, we are, um, not proposing any meter pedestals, not proposing any cabinets on the ground. What we will do is at the base of the pole, we'll do a handhole. And within that handhole, which is a cut within the pole, we will actually, um, run within the pole, nothing exterior. We will run, um, what, what's called a meter rated fuse box. And it's rated for a max wattage of thirty amps. The, the installation, even with the combination of both technologies, will not exceed thirty amps. And then the servicing utility company, which in this case is SCE, they will actually build Verizon directly. So that the city doesn't have to get involved in any, um, power, any utility charges or, or worrying about whether or not the, the bill is paid, that will be directly with Verizon and the utility company. Um, all, all of the poles for the most part, I can say, within ninety-nine point nine 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 percent certainty, will have to be replaced. And, and we know that going in, so for every single proposed pole location, we will be replacing, um, that pole at no cost to the city. And we will match the poles that you have. Um, I understand, I know that the city is in the last transition of the SCE buyback of poles. But any pole that we were, we locate on, we will replace with the city. I don't know if there's any more questions?
Go ahead, councilmember, sorry, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just had a question, if, um, wh- what's the dispersment on these? If we were just hypothetically, we said, okay, the entire city's gonna be covered by this, how far apart would we see these throughout the city?
It, it's kind of hard to say, to give you a hard number, but I can say on an average, it's a couple of hundred feet. And it depends on the location, the, the, the terrain. That, that's a good estimate to, to keep.
So maybe a football field?
Couple blocks.
All right, um, and you already answered my other question, I was wondering why the, where the, there were no conceptuals with an actual ground box depicted, so that's good to hear that you're using the, uh, the amperage in- internal to the, uh, poles.
I mean, our, our intent is to make it as visually pleasing as possible. And not to have any furn- as we call it, furniture on the ground, which would be another cabinet or, or another piece of equipment other than what we need just on the pole.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions?
I, I have a few more, one more view that I can just continue. Those drawings are very hard to read from this angle, but they, they do depict, um, what I refer to um, in, in a sim, and maybe it's better if I go back to the sim. I think that's a more clearer, um, vision of what we're proposing. And that is all that I have, and I will just go through to the end.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
One second, councilmember Lormore.
Yeah, before you go, um, I realize that we have these two presentations here, uh, but I want to clarify. So these are going to be separate and, and the systems are, are not going to be integrated between the two companies, that they
That, that's correct.
So it'll be a couple hundred feet for each company, or a couple blocks.
Potentially, I mean, I, I can't really speak for AT&amp;T, but I, but I can say that we can be on the same street. We can be on the same side of the street, we can coexist across the street from each other from a technology perspective.
Okay, all right, appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, can you co-locate on these poles or no?
You know, people ask that all the time, and, and here, here's kind of my answer that I say, from a technology perspective, probably. But we would have to increase the height of the pole dramatically to allow the vertical separation. And I don't think it would be something that would be visually pleasing when the day is done.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vega.
Uh, it's, it's up to you, if you'd like to just take action on Verizon's request now. You can do that and then we can move to AT&amp;T, or you can save any votes to the tail end, the choice is yours.
Does the council have a preference? Do it together? Okay, so maybe if we can have both presentations and then we'll take action, please.
All right, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
And next we have, um, Rosa Green with AT&amp;T, who's here to present AT&amp;T's pro- proposed designs.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Members of the council and staff, I'm Rosa Zuniga Green, I'm with Bechtel Power and Infrastructure, and I'm the consultant for AT&amp;T Wireless. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you and present these, um, designs. What you have before you is, uh, two proposed designs. This location is actually just down the street, um, near the area of southwest corner of Hamner and Limonite, um, next to Wendy's. Um, what you have on the left side is what we consider our, or we're calling our Princess Leia design. I don't know where the name came from. Okay, that's embarrassing. The Princess Leia design, yes, yes, exactly, and exactly. Uh, it consists of two radio remote units mounted, one per side at the top portion of the streetlight pole. On one side of the pole, there is one disconnect switch mounted below the radio remote unit, which is basically a surge protection device. And this device can be powered down, the, the site can be powered down from this device. Along with other appurtenances for the power, there will be one antenna mounted over a shroud. And, uh, this location is called a micro design, which sends out signal a little bit further than what is called the PICO design, which I'll go into that, uh, later. Um, again, the micro, the micro sites on the radio remote units do not fit inside the shroud. And thus the reason for having the Princess Leia, uh, look on the radio remote units on each side of the pole. So like Verizon, we also need to have fiber as well. Power. Our power will be on the ground, uh, in a box. Uh, it will be coming in through the pole, so it's called the WTR. So this is, again, like Verizon said, it will be, uh, maximum wattage of thirty amps and it's called a wireless, uh, tariff rate system. And it, they build, uh, AT&amp;T directly. The next picture? Uh, no, on the next side, go back. This is called the stacked RRUs design. Again, it's two radio remote units that are mounted stacked above each other at the upper portion of the streetlight pole. One on each, it's not one on each side of the pole, but one above each other. On the same side of the pole, there is one disconnect switch mounted below the lowest radio remote unit. Again, this is a surge protection device. The site, this site can also be powered down from this device. And again, along with other appurtenances for power, there will be one antenna mounted over a shroud. Again, the micro, uh, RRUs do not ins- fit inside of a shroud, thus the reason for placing them outside of the uh, the way you see them on the pole stacked. There is another one, PICO design, you can go ahead and keep going, please. Keep going. This one is called the PICO design. This is not a site that is in the city of Eastville. I wanted to provide you an example of what the PICO design looks like. This site is actually in the city of Irvine. And the antenna is mounted at the top in a shroud. And this one conceals four radio remote units inside of the shroud and one surge protection device inside of the shroud. This is a lot smaller. So for every micro site, which is the previous design that I showed you, you could potentially go ahead and place two to three PICO sites like this. Are there any questions?
Does that conclude your presentation?
That concludes my presentation, yes.
Councilmember Lormore.
Thank you, uh, just a couple clarifying points. So, the, when, when you said the power would be on the ground? Would it be in the ground?
Yes, it's, yes, yes, there, like, um, Verizon said, we don't like to put any external furniture. What we consider furniture within the right-of-way.
Okay, uh, when I'm looking here at the, the PICO design, um, I, I don't know if it's just my, uh, how I'm reading it, but the, the schematic, i- if we could go to that one there. Uh, on the, on the right-hand side, it, there's, there are two poles. I- am I reading that correctly?
Yes, what you see is the, the lighter pole is the existing pole. And then the darker one is the proposed.
It, it's not that you're gonna be putting two poles right next to each other, okay? I appreciate the clarification. And so as for the, the different designs that are being presented, um, does that mean that you would like th- all of these options?
Yes. And the reason being is because on the Princess Leia, on the Edison-owned poles, Edison does like that Princess Leia, I understand some of the city staff like the Princess Leia. There are other city poles that may be owned by the city, or I know that you're acquiring some of the Edison poles, we'd like to be able to have the flexibility of having the two micro design options. And then again, with the PICO design, being able to have that as well.
Okay, and I, I don't know if I, because I was looking at these schematics, if I didn't hear it or if it just wasn't articulated. As for, uh, replacement of the poles?
We will be replacing the poles.
Okay.
Each one of this will, the poles will be replaced.
Okay.
Okay? And we like to make them look as like as possible. Okay?
Excellent, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember. What about down the road, you know, technology changes? We come up with new delivery systems, and these are, these are obsolete, no longer used. Will there be a replacement or removal of the equipment to make it conforming to the old style?
There will be at some point, as you know, technology is constantly evolving. So at some point, there may be some replacement on the existing poles, replacements of the equipment, or we may have to go to additional poles.
But ultimately, you, your company would be responsible for.
Yes, 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 you would not be, yes. Any other questions?
Yeah, just to follow up on that real quick, I would like to see that included in our, whatever type of agreement that we do.
It already is, and and the ordinance for for poles that aren't gonna be the city-owned streetlights. If there's ever any other poles that are installed pursuant to a permit, we do have provisions in the ordinance related to the take-down of abandoned facilities that are no longer in use.
Perfect, thank you.
This is a beautiful city. We would like to keep it beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what we're trying to, a couple more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, actually, you kind of just addressed my question, the question that I had, is, is, does this require maintenance? Like, are you, is your company gonna cover that, like, just those logistics?
Yes, maintenance, yes, and congratulations.
Any other questions? I have just a quick question, couple, couple of questions. On going back to the schematics, your schematic shows the SCE to remove streetlight pole. Is that correct, or is that gonna be you guys that remove it?
No, that is S, an SCE-owned pole. The location that I was showing you earlier with the two designs, Princess Leia, and the stacked RRUs, that is actually an SCE pole right now, because the purchase hasn't been completed, so the design is shown as the current state is right now.
So once everything is complete with the purchase, the true-up and everything, how will that work? Will you be responsible for removing the pole, or will we be responsible?
No, we will be responsible. The city will not be responsible for anything.
Referring to now is, is just Edison's own demand for their own streetlights if they, they take it down. But that wouldn't be the case once the city takes it over.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we aren't responsible for removing the streetlights for you guys. Looking at this, one of the things that I I'm very appreciative of is putting as much equipment as we can underground. Once again, we do have a beautiful city. We wanna keep it that way. We don't wanna have these boxes all over. The one concern I do have is looking at both of your designs, is you have roughly almost ten feet of boxes. You go back to Verizon's picture at the community center there, you have a lot of shrubs in that area. So I wanna make sure that if we can, if we can locate those boxes, if we have to run the the line to those boxes into some bare area, because otherwise, you're removing basically ten feet of the nice shrubbery that's there with existing, any kind of existing landscaping. Does that kind of make sense? And I think that would go for both. Yeah.
Yeah, and yes, we will minimize the disruption to landscaping. We will work with your staff.
And and the same for Verizon as well. I think both companies have a mutual interest in in maintaining the the landscape of the communities that that we enter into. Right, so, yes.
Great, thank you. One last thing, going off of our purchase of the light poles, do we have any idea the retrofit compared to when Verizon and AT&amp;T would start doing those? Is there any way that that we could designate poles that they may do? Because it almost seems like a redundancy and waste of cost if we're going to spend the money to retrofit them, and then all of a sudden, maybe a month later, AT&amp;T or Verizon's gonna come in and completely remove that pole.
That's a, an excellent point, actually. So tonight, you're just approving the design in not particular locations, but we can have conversations with AT&amp;T and Verizon about specific poles that they're interested in moving on fairly quickly, so that we're not duplicating efforts.
That would be great, yeah.
And to that response, that pole that I'm showing you, which is just down the street, Edison is not allowing me to move forward until the purchase is complete with your city, so.
Then by that point, then you can kind of.
That's right.
Be flush, you know, it'll work out.
Right, AT&amp;T has met with your staff. We showed them these designs. We are moving forward with preparing the application packages for encroachment permits, so on and so forth. And of course, none of that would be released until the actual purchase went through.
And also, what I think would be helpful is if we had an asset list of all of the poles that you're acquiring. And this way, we can, you know, look at that list and then develop a deployment plan based upon what's available. That would be helpful.
All four of them in the city.
All four thousand.
Anyone you see.
Everything, okay, all right, thank you.
Proud of it.
With her ask, it would just be easier for us to work as a team in looking at that asset list, because it would also identify the lats and longs and the streetlight types that there are out there.
Well, we have an excellent staff, and I'm sure they're more than happy to help you out with that asset list.
Awesome, that would be great, thank you.
Also, one of the things that's come up is a mechanism for the city to reserve a pole once a carrier has come in, so that way another carrier doesn't come in afterwards and say, we want that pole. And then both companies are submitting applications for the same pole. And so some type of mechanism the city could could start with, making sure that that there's no duplicate efforts in that.
That, that's built into the master license agreement. It's a site license authorization. So you would submit a request, and essentially, it would be a first-come, first-served, whoever asked for it first and gets the authorization.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Mr. Aguilar, are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, we received one public comment from Christopher Foger.
Mr. Foger, please.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff, Members of the Public. We, we live in an age where we depend on technology to communicate with our friends, family, and business partners. However, when huge telecom companies and federal agencies try to force newer technologies onto local municipalities, you have to stop and wonder if there are any safety and health risks. As of right now, our current 4G networks use big cell towers to transmit radiation in all directions at frequencies below six gigahertz. A 5G network, on the other hand, uses a completely different type of system to transmit data. Instead of just firing a blanket of radiation in all directions, a 5G network will have to rely on smaller antennas to shoot highly focused beams of radiation straight to a device. This is due to the fact that 5G networks operate on bands of about thirty through sixty gigahertz. These higher frequencies produce shorter wavelengths, which translates to more data being transmitted in a shorter amount of time. In essence, the lower the frequency, the longer the bandwidth, and vice versa. The higher the frequency, the shorter the bandwidth. The problem with these high-range of frequencies is that they don't travel very far and can't penetrate through walls and other ob, and other objects. A problem, a problem that doesn't occur with 4G. So in order for 5G to ever work, you would need to install a small antenna every five hundred feet or so all throughout the city with highly focused beams of radiation aimed directly at you. It might, it might sound good at first, knowing that with 5G, you can download a movie in two seconds or have a live video chat with high definition and no lag. But at what cost do all these innovations come? There has been a good amount of research over the years trying to find a link between cellphone radiation and cancer. One set of studies I can point to are those of the National Toxicology Program and the research on the effects of radio frequency radiation from 2G and 3G cell phones on male and female rats. These studies took over ten years and thirty million dollars to complete. The researchers found that there is clear evidence of tumors in the hearts of male rats when exposed to radiation. Furthermore, they found some evidence of tumors in the brains of male rats. And finally, they found some evidence of tumors in the adrenal glands of male rats. Keep in mind that, that back when these studies first started, the only widely available networks were 2G and 3G, which are the, which are the networks we still use for texting and calling. In regards to a 5G network, the city of Eastville isn't asking for this dangerous technology. Instead, this agenda is being forced down by huge telecom companies who are embedded with the FCC, who, by the way, are also pushing for a 5G rollout. Many cities across California have already rejected 5G. It's about time that we do the same. Do the right thing and say no to 5G, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
That concludes my public comment.
Thank you. Any further discussion among the council? I think just one, one quick thing, question, do we have to, are we approving all three designs at the same time, or?
It, you can do it either way. If your pleasure is to move to approve all four designs, there was three from AT&amp;T and one from Verizon, you can do it that way, or you can break them up individually if you feel that that is more appropriate. But if the consensus is that you'd like to approve all of them, there's no harm in doing it all in one motion.
I guess just discussion-wise, my, my, looking at the, the designs, I think the Pico design, I know that requires more, but it's a lot cleaner. I mean, it's just a simple pole, rather than having these things sticking off of it. That's just my, my personal feeling towards that. And are they looking for the approval of all three of those designs necessarily? Are we to pick one, or?
They're asking that you approve all three. You don't, aren't required to approve all three. You can pick if that's the pleasure of the council, but they are asking for all three to be approved. And Verizon is asking just for their one design to be approved.
Well, this time I would solicit a motion regarding this item.
I move to approve all designs proposed by Verizon and AT&amp;T.
Second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari. Mayor Protem Plot.
Yes.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item number nine point two, sidewalk vendor ordinance. Ms. Vega.
Yes, again, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening, before you, was an ordinance amending chapter six point seventy-six of the code related to roadside vending. We've proposed this ordinance as a result of new state legislation that took effect on January first, legalizing sidewalk vending. The current code completely prohibits sidewalk vending, so so something needed to be done to remedy the inconsistency with the new state law. I conferred with city staff, code enforcement staff, and there was a lack of of complaint history related to sidewalk vending in the city. So rather than establish regulations for a problem that doesn't yet exist, at least not significantly in the city, we decided to just permit sidewalk vending at this point in time and then see, see what happens. The city council would always have the authority to come back at a later point and establish regulations for sidewalk vending. But it's very difficult to calibrate regulations for, for activity that has very minimal existence in the city. So this was the direction I got in terms of drafting an ordinance for the council's consideration at this time. And I'm happy to discuss it with the council or any of the provisions of SB nine forty-six, if you're interested in talking about it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vega. Let's go ahead and open this up for public comment. Mr. Aguilar, do we have any public comments regarding this item?
We've had no requests.
And for a council discussion, Councilmember Yao.
I, I think this is a good idea, but also necessary, because as of right now, from my understanding, is that legally, we are not allowed to prohibit street vending. And because we don't have a regulation in place legally, I believe anyone can set up a street vendor right now, and we cannot. We, the city is not allowed to regulate them, because we don't have an existing regulation. So it's, it's, I think this is very much needed, and as soon as possible, as a matter of fact. Because again, legally, anyone can set up, can go out the street and start selling food right now, and there's no way for us to regulate that.
Correct. The, the current code that prohibits sidewalk vending is unenforceable as of January first. So it needs to be amended to become consistent with the new state law. This proposed ordinance would would allow the sidewalk vending. And then another option is to, to allow it, but with some regulation. And so really, just as a matter of what kind of regulation and how extensive should that regulation be? And I think that the sense that, that we were thinking was that, well, let's see if this even becomes something that that is worth regulating in the city, or if it's really a, a non-existent issue or a very minimal issue, versus you get an influx of sidewalk vendors, and then we would obviously establish a much more rigorous sort of regulatory control.
Councilmember, sorry, was, I know as you said, as of January first, this takes effect. So I was thinking about, you know, are we consistent with what current county code is?
I don't believe the county has actually revised their ordinance yet. The, your existing code is holdover from the county.
Right.
So you've never, you had never amended it after incorporation. So, and I don't believe that the county has taken action as of yet to amend their code on this issue.
And did we reach out to any of our neighbors?
I've been reached out to by some of your neighbors, and then others in my firm have been working on the issue as well for, for their cities. Some of the cities that we represent are establishing regulatory programs, so I do have materials I can pull from for that. That tends to be the cities that we represent that are in more urban areas and have a lot of street vendors, though.
Yeah, my, my desire would be that we, if our neighboring cities have codes that we agree with, that there would be some type of consistency, so that you don't have people, oh, you know, I was across the street in Harupa Valley selling, and now I came over to Eastville. And so that, you know, that way, it would make it easier for enforcement and for particular vendors. And did, what about code enforcement? Have they, oh, you said there were no, yeah, there were, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that's it, that's all I had, thanks.
Uh, yeah, Mario is here, and I, and I did work with Mario on this.
Councilmember Lorimer.
I, I can understand not the, the law that you aren't allowed to prohibit. But I, we haven't had any instances, but without food handling licenses, is that something that we can attach to that?
You could.
It becomes a problem?
As a part of a permit program, though, any generally applicable county environmental health requirements would still apply to these vendors. So if the county requires like a, a county, you know, food handler's permit or something like that, then they would still be required to, to get that. It's just that we wouldn't have a city ordinance sort of reaffirming it and then issuing city sites for violation of that requirement. That would be on the county unless you were to adopt an ordinance, sort of rolling that into your code, that same requirement into the city's code. Otherwise, they would be sort of separate standalone things, and the county could issue a site, but the city wouldn't issue the site, if that makes sense.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I just want to, just i, if the, could we keep an eye out so when the county does redo theirs?
Absolutely. Mario and I just, just spoke earlier today, too, and we're, we're also gonna start keeping tabs on, especially closely on any complaints that may come in regarding sidewalk vendors, just to see if there is an uptick, uptick in activity after the, with this new change in law. And just remember that it's only the non-motorized sidewalk vending. It doesn't impact ice cream trucks or other, you know, motorized vending from the actual street, so.
Yeah, what I would like to see is our code updated, if the county code is different. And that way, I would rather, if there are sites issued, that they were, the, the city ordinance was used rather than the county code. So it would help with their consistency.
I'll keep an eye out for the county and as well as your neighboring jurisdictions and see if we can kind of get a regional, almost, kind of outlook. Can't ever make any guarantees on that, obviously, but, you know, we can try.
Any other comments? I have a question for Captain Hedge, just regarding this. Do you see, have you seen any? I know when I've driven through Harupa and Norco, I haven't seen any, but have your deputies ran into any sidewalk vendors?
Yeah, the city of Eastville, no, we have not. In the city of Harupa, we have contacted many sidewalk vendors or people that are. People that are pedaling on the side of the road.
Okay, thank you, so that's just something for us to be aware of, just that our neighboring cities. May experience it and it may come our way. Yeah, so I think it's something that we just need to be prepared to do the permit process pretty quickly, and it is, I mean, it is happening, um. The sidewalk vending is happening, not necessarily within city jurisdiction, but it's happening at the parks, it's happening on a regular basis at the parks.
J C S D still has full authority to actually prohibit some, those kind of vendors in their parks. The way this um bill was drafted, it only applies to cities and counties, it doesn't cover special districts.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion amongst the council? I'm looking for a motion on this.
So I move.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Aguila.
Councilmember Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari. Mayor Pro Tem Plot.
Yes.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Vega. Item nine point three, public art mural for city hall, and this will be presented by our senior management analyst, Crystal Adams.
Hi, I promise I'm back here. Hi, good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and community members, my name is Crystal Adams, I'm a senior management analyst here in the city of Eastvale. I can't see anybody, I'm short. Let me move it closer, is that better?
That's better.
Thank you, alright, to reiterate, I am Crystal Adams, senior management analyst here at the city of Eastvale. Um, this item is to further the city's strategic plan, specifically target number three, goal number three. Which is to create value-added development within the city. My item today is hopefully the beginning of an initiative to incorporate more art in public places within the city of Eastvale. Um, the item tonight involves artist Ms. Tuthill, um, an Eastvale resident and second generation muralist. She has been commissioned for many beautiful pieces and is graciously offering to help launch this initiative. Um, to complete a six by fourteen portable canvas mural for the city. This portable mural will be housed in our beautiful new council chambers and have the ability to move when a permanent city hall is built. Um, if the city manager is authorized to enter into the contract tonight, um, Ms. Tuthill will work with both staff. And the community to design a piece that will be entitled Past, Present and Future. This piece will reflect the spirit and pride of the community, as well as become a gathering place for the community members to come and appreciate art locally. Once the design has final approval, the mural will take about six months to be completed and will be unveiled um here at council chambers hopefully later this year. Currently, funds for this project are allocated out of the general fund, but staff will continue to research grant opportunities to further commission art pieces. Additional art pieces in the public areas that will highlight other local artists. Um, Ms. Tuthill will retain the copyright to the commissioned piece, but the city will retain the license to reproduce the design. Distribute photographic copies um at the discretion of council, um, for no additional charge. That's it, thank you, that concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, have we received any public comments on this?
Yes, we did receive one card from Steve Tuthill.
Mr. Tuthill, please.
Thank, um, uh, Brian and Olivia, thank Christopher all the hard work that's gone into, to bring this to, to the concept where we are. And, and as um Crystal has stated, it's going to be a, a six by fourteen foot canvas-based mural. That uh will have portability, and our plan is to encourage Eastvale participation for citizenry to help. Um, contribute to the design aspects of the past, present and future. So we're gonna have to work out a lot of details for who and how and how to curate and jury all of those aspects. But we're uh planning on starting a meeting next week to establish uh timelines uh for that. So we want to thank everyone for the opportunity and we're really looking forward, excited to do this, and Rosemary wanted to.
Well, we have a sample here.
Yes, we do.
Today is uh Richard Nixon's birthday and um I just became a new docent at the Nixon Library, so I thought I, I'd do this portrait, and so.
And this will be hanging at um, uh, at the Nixon Library. So, some of them haven't even seen it yet. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
That concludes my comment.
Thank you, and now council discussion, any questions, comments, Councilmember Tsarri?
I just wanna say I'm very excited, I've seen uh lots of Rosemary's work and it's excellent, so I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to see what uh you come up with. And uh, did we, is there any grant funding available, did we look into any of that?
We're still looking into it, but there's none available at this time, and, and. It, for people that think that Eastville doesn't have a museum, we do have a museum of art uh, uh, over at the Tut Hills House, so.
That's right, it's just not open to the public.
You haven't been inside their home, there is, there is a museum in there.
And has uh, maybe we can reach out to Assemblymember Cervantes's office too, and maybe they could come up with something that uh might be able to help us out. And that's all I had, thank you.
Any other comments?
Oh, and Senator Roth.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm absolutely excited about this, um, just today, I was over at the county administrative center. And a number of pieces that had a, an uncanny similarity to one in the back there. Uh, were displayed all throughout um the county building, not only downstairs in the foyer. But also upstairs in the meeting rooms and back into the offices, so, um. The, your art is everywhere and it is great, and um, in fact, I, I was, uh. I, I was excited while up there sharing with anybody that would listen that that was painted by an Eastvale artist, so.
Councilmember Plot. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna thank city staff and the Tut Hills for coming together, collaborating on this, I think it's important as we continue to grow. Your city, art, music, those things, you know, that you're able to express yourself in multiple ways is important. For the city to express their personalities and the multiple personalities of they are that represents our city, um. You know, so thank you for taking that step and hopefully we can furthermore, uh, Eastvale residents that, that we can find such talent to be able to continue to. To e- e- express that in our cities, I think it's extremely important to create its identity, uh, as we continue to grow, so thank you.
Just to kinda echo Councilmember Plot's comments, I think it's great and it, it does pull out. Um, the uniqueness of Eastville and of our residents of Eastville, and it's, it's great to see and. I, I think it'll help to highlight some of those residents in Eastville, starting off with our, our canvas that will be here in city hall, um. Hopefully temporarily until we get a real city hall, but uh. I, I, I look forward to this, I think it's great, I think it'll be great, especially utilizing a resident, um, that's. Is a true artist and has done a great job in, in um helping to bring art to the community. So one of the things, just, just with this, I think it may be good for us also just to um somehow reach out with the. The, uh, Rosa Parks Elementary School does a great art program, so I, or a great art walk, so it might be something good once we, we get this up to. Even um exhibit it there or something, um, just to get the schools involved too, so I look forward to this, um. Is there any other comments or questions, if not, then I would look.
Yeah, just, just to. Just to ask, you, you had just asked a question, that's my understanding that uh Rosemary's already been invited to the art walk.
And I think we have someone here that can get her in contact with uh someone that helps to run that. Um, you may be looking at the back of his head right now, so. Councilmember Lorimer. Were you?
I would like to make a motion to approve this item.
Mr. Aguila.
Councilmember Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot.
Yes.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you, I look forward to that, that'll be great.
Mayor, if I might just say that, that, this is a, 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 an item that was born and grew legs. From the August twenty fourth strategic planning and priority goals workshop, when we had the Tut Hills participated in that workshop and that strategic planning. Workshop and really bringing the idea of culture and art and uh to, to the council. And you guys identified it as a strategic, one of our top four priority goals, and um, and so. And when that plan was ad- adopted in November fourteenth of twenty eighteen, and here we are. Uh, less than about six, eight weeks later, um, uh, we're, we have a contract to move forward, so, um, the, the.
What took so long?
I know. So, uh, um, it, it's, it's just, uh, we see, we agree with you and, and it's a great importance in a, uh, to. Express and, and share our past, present and future and, and allow art to show our differences in our, our uniqueness here in Eastville, so. And we're very excited about this and working with the Tut Hills on this.
Thank you. Item nine point four, approval of vehicle purchase with M S R C grant and A B twenty seven sixty six. Subvention funds, Mr. Jones, please.
We are looking to purchase two Nissan Leafs, uh, um, electric vehicles for clean, uh. Mobility in our community, for our community enhancement and safety team, as well as city staff to use as pool vehicles. Uh, as they uh do different things around the community or, or run over to Riverside County or. Western Riverside Cog or wherever we go, um, and we have two charging, or four charging stations, I believe. Uh, over at station twenty seven and, uh, um. It would be good that if we have some electric vehicles using them, uh, um, and, uh, so. Um, with this grant funds, we're gonna be uh purchasing uh two Nissan Leafs that will be added to our fleet of vehicles. Um, and we won't have to pay any gas, the, the, our electric bill will be paying for them, so, we're very excited about them. They have about a hundred and fifty mile range on them, so you can get pretty much anywhere in Eastville and, and Riverside County, so we're pretty excited.
Thank you, uh, do we have any public comments on this item?
We've had no requests.
Council discussion?
Councilmember Plot. Thank you for being smart and saying finding grants and, and using that, that, uh, the assembly bill fund, the money there to. Not have to dip in anything that, that's valuable to us, like the general fund, just using, you know, using state money to spend for local causes, so, thank you. So, that's always a win.
Any other comments? We don't currently have any stations or charging stations in this center, do we?
No, we do not, we'd love to have some charging stations in the center. We'd love to have charging stations, it, it's actually a building code, uh, for all new shopping centers, uh, to, uh, plum for, for them. Um, and so that is a requirement, and many are, are putting them in voluntarily, um, because. Uh, electric vehicles are becoming more prominent and people are coming and parking and charging, or, you know. We had an individual come up and, um, share a couple of the Ar- Aramoto, uh. Three-wheel electric uh vehicles, and he had, he had to search around for an electric charging station, we took him over to cha- station twenty seven and helped him out a little bit. To give him some juice to get back to a public one, but, uh, um, um, but it was, uh. A little bit challenging in this, in this region, we're kind of a, electric charging uh desert right now, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilmember Yao.
And maybe we can get hydrogen station next.
Could be great.
I, I just got a hydrogen car that's out, and, and the closest one is all the way in Riverside.
Any other comments? Then I'm looking for a motion on this item. Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Aguila, please.
Councilmember Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot.
Yes.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, moving along to item number nine point five, restaurant feedback questionnaire results. By our economic development manager, Kimberly Wright, please.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, members of the staff and members of the community. I am Kimberly Wright and I'm here to share the restaurant feedback questionnaire results. The survey went out in October to solicit feedback on what desires the community had for. Restaurant experiences here in the city of Eastvale, this is so much a goal of the city that it is part of our strategic plan. It is target three, goal three, to elevate the dining experience. In addition to the community also expressing their desire for elevated dining. The city recognizes, the staff recognizes the fact that there is a huge retail gap in food and beverage services. The leakage is seventy one million dollars, this is huge opportunity for restaurants here in Eastvale. In forming a food culture here in Eastvale, we are going to make this a destination so that people from the outside of Eastvale. Come to the city of Eastvale and have a new unique experience here. The seventy one million dollar leakage equates to about twenty three restaurants that could absorb that amount, so it's a huge number. Of restaurants that we could absorb that amount with. Now, the following restaurant categories are going to be used throughout the presentation and they were also used in the questionnaire. We have fine dining, premium casual, casual dining, fast casual and fast food. Now, the following four slides were shared with council in July, there was a windshield survey taken based on restaurants and restaurants with drive-throughs. And as you can see here, the bottom two categories, the fast casual and fast food make up about eighty percent of this. There are zero restaurants in the fine dining and premium casual area, so we are certainly trying to work on a balance. To get us to the top two categories here. And this shows us the percentage of breakdowns for drive-throughs in the city of Eastvale. Here, we know that there are seventy nine percent of restaurants without drive-throughs and twenty one percent of the restaurants do. Fast food versus fast casual, there are eleven fast food drive-through restaurants and there are three fast casuals, so that's the breakdown there. So in this six-week period, this questionnaire was out for the public, we had nearly nineteen hundred responses, so that one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five responses. This is a really strong response to this survey. So we're gonna go into the questions that were asked during, in, in the questionnaire, the first question is on average, how many times a month? Do you dine at a premium casual or fine dining restaurant? Over half the respondents, we know from the city, are leaving at least one to two ti- or one to two times a month. And then moving on, we know that at least third, or thirty percent of them are going outside for casual or fine dining three to four times a month. So combined with the eighty percent, we are losing, that's that, that's that leakage, that's that gap that we need to make up. Next question that was asked was, when visiting a restaurant outside of Eastvale, how do, how far do you usually travel? The response there, about forty-two percent said sixteen to twenty-five minutes outside of Eastvale. So this next slide goes hand in hand with the last question, what top three cities are you traveling to? And they're traveling to first Rancho Cucamonga, second Chino and third Corona. And then are we, are they leaving because of lack of food options here in Eastvale? And ninety-eight percent say yes. What restaurants do you typically visit when traveling outside of Eastvale? And this word cloud reflects the larger the word, the more respondents, you know, um, stated that as their answer. So obviously Cheesecake Factory stands out, but there are some really unique ones on here, the state, Teorica. And these are the kind of restaurants that we really see, you know, uh, being a benefit here in the community. We want that unique destination experience and the community is obviously agrees. Next question, what are your top three reasons for choosing a restaurant? Top three choices, food quality, service quality and menu variety. Would you visit premium casual or fine dining restaurant options if they were here in the city? And again, an overwhelming response of ninety-eight percent of the respondents said yes, they absolutely would. What type of restaurants do you like to visit for celebratory occasions? First response steakhouse, then seafood and then cultural ethnic. And with the cultural ethnic, it was really, um, interesting to see all the responses, there was specific desires to see a dumpling house, to see Korean barbecue. So the list went on there, so definitely a lot of consistent feedback in those three areas. Are you within this seat, or are, excuse me, are you in within, are you within the Eastvale city limits during lunch and dinner? And sixty percent of the respondents said they were, and this information is consist- consistent with the reports that we have for daytime population. When dining out at fine dining restaurants, how much do you typically spend per person? The biggest response, the largest response was thirty to forty-nine dollars per plate, and there were some that were willing to pay seventy or more dollars a pa- plate. And it goes hand in hand. And it goes hand in hand with this question as well. Would you visit a restaurant that offers a plate between twenty-five and fifty? And again, seventy-seven percent, they were on board with the pricier dinner options. And what is your opinion of fast food restaurants in Eastvale? A combined eighty-five percent said there was just enough or too many. We shared that some cities provide incentives such as city grants as part of an economic development program, and we asked if they would be on board with something like this. And again, a very large response saying yes, eighty-eight percent are on board with the city offering business incentives to get the right restaurants here. What is your opinion of drive-throughs in Eastvale? Eighty-two percent combined said there were either too many or just enough. And next, should city council take action to limit new drive-through restaurants until there is a better a better balance in all five categories? And yes, seventy-four percent thinks that city council should take such action. And these are some verbatim responses directly from the questionnaire. And I'm gonna go ahead and just read those. The lifestyle from the people who live in the city, walking, jogging, family gathering point. Do not reflect the food choices that we have here in the city. Fine dining in Eastvale will make the city more upscale and bring in more outside revenue. We are always leaving and driving far to have a five-star dinner and also to celebrate special occasions with dinners. So it'd be fabulous to have local options here in Eastvale. And a couple more here, enough fast food, please offer healthy food options, offer more unique for freshly prepared food options in rushed at restaurants. The Field House in Norco and the Meat Cellar in Chino are great examples of what I'd like to see in Eastvale. Nice food and wine, beer selection and evolving menus based on season. In addition to more restaurants, more nightlife with entertainment. So to summarize, Eastvale residents have shared their feedback and they are definitely, they definitely have the desire to have more diverse dining options. Respondents expressed that development should be focused on premium casual and fine dining categories and less on the fast food options. And respondents also expressed they are in support of an incentive program to help recruit the right restaurants here to our city. So the following slides are going to share some diverse and modern dining options that we see being a great fit in the city. Again, we wanna create that distant destination, something unique to bright- to bring people from Chino, from Ranch Kukamunga here to our city. And these restaurant concepts shown here would do great in an entertainment district. Definitely trendier, the hip, upscale feel. And here are some concepts of fresh and quality menu options where it's prepared fresh. Nice wine menu. Beautiful presentation. And then here are some ideas for food hall and open eatery concepts. This is the Anaheim Packing House. Again, the concept of his gathering community gather- gathering community together, you know, that's what it's all about. Having public spaces. Here's the Liberty Public Market in San Diego. The Food Lab in Riverside. This is a food court type feel, so you may not know what it is you want for dinner, but you just go for the experience. You have many options to choose from. Great place for gathering and hanging out. And with the history of wineries in our region, it would be so great to have some of these urban wineries and brewery concepts here in Eastvale. And there are some um conversations that have been started already, and we're excited to share. That we've talked with heroes and they are very interested and coming to the Palopolis property. There's a location in Fullerton in Riverside. They have um great artwork on the walls and peanut shells on the floor. It's definitely a great vibe with comfort food. And they also have the Roscoe's Deli in Chino, okay, same company. Canitaros, they have locations in Chino, I'm sorry, yeah, in Chino. And they have homestyle Italian food, very authentic. Luna Modern Mexican Kitchen, we just considered continued a conversation with them earlier today. And are very excited to show them some property options. They have great presentation and a modern, authentic, you know, beautiful presentation with their plates. They have locations in Ranch Kukamunga and Corona. And Spaggy's Italian Restaurant, Hidden Gem in Upland. They are upscale Italian food with. Really nice presentation as well, great wine list. And Stone Fire Grill. Stone Fire Grill has multiple locations, the closest being in Ranch Kukamunga, definitely has a family atmosphere. Uh they have great tri-tip, fresh food, fresh salads and beer on tap. The Meat Cellar, they have two locations, Claremont and Chino, and this is a really unique um idea that you can go and you pick out your choice of meat before you. Before it's served to you, you get to, you know, handpick it and they have a great wine list. Think something like this would also be a great fit for our community. How do we make this work? It's all about strategic partnerships, working with the property owners, the city of Eastvale, of course, developers, restaurateurs, brokers. Pulling them all together and getting on the same page, hosting broker roundtables, the brokers know what projects we have in the works. Telling the Eastvale story, the numbers do not lie. We have, I'll move on here, the highest household income in Riverside County. Sixty percent of our residents make over a hundred thousand annually, and that's almost double what Riverside County has. The trade area in Eastvale in about fifteen-minute drive time shows a daytime trade area population of over four hundred and forty thousand. The trade area population is closer to three hundred and seventy-two thousand. And the Eastvale daytime population is nearly forty-six thousand. And how do we make it happen? Again, we look closer at the survey results, we identify those results, we compare the results with the site criteria. We find out who wants to expand and who wants to grow in California, and it may mean reaching out to the retailers directly. Connecting them with suitable sites and connecting them to the developers. And of course, we would like to develop and introduce, based on the community's response of looking at um or being on board with the restaurant attraction. Our broker incentive program. We want to develop a program that is right for the restaurants. And encourage brokers to bring the quality restaurants to the city of Eastvale. And of course, marketing, telling the economic development story, highlighting the facts. Again, the numbers do not lie. We're gonna focus on what we can do rather than what we can't do, and as our city manager always says, we can't have our first until we ha- we can't have our second. Until we have our first, so we are going to get our first. That'll be our goal. So that is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Under urban wineries, how come there's no examples of uh Live Oak?
We missed that one.
Councilmember Yau.
Um out of curiosity, out of, you know, those who fill out their survey, do we see a pattern of? Do people prefer like more established chain fine dining or did anyone or did any? Do we have a number of people requesting for like small local mom and pop shop?
There was a good mix. We did definitely see some of the national chains on there, but we did see some of the unique restaurants that are more regional. And that is really positive because we can go to the regional partners and find out re- regional restaurants and find out if they're looking to expand and make those. Instant contacts really easily, so there was a good mix.
Any other comments? Councilmember Lorimar?
When will all those restaurants be here?
Working on it now.
Good. Councilmember Plot? Yeah. Mister Agler, are there any public comments on this item?
We've had no requests.
All right, Councilmember Plot?
Thank you. Staff, Kimberly, Olivia, you guys, thank you so much. Uh thi- this information is is a vi- extraordinarily powerful. Because what it does is, it allows what we thought here maybe at council was, this is number, this is one A, right? This is the. One of the most important things in the city, but we do that by observation, listening to social media, think, okay, this is what Eastville wants, but. When you take the survey, i- i- it's in alignment, right? So now it allows us to give us the ability. To kinda know that we have the city behind us and to start with staff and council together, coming together a- and um. You know, having kinda eye on the prize. Uh. An example today when we met, and I won't go into the details of of the Luna Luna Modern Kitchen, but what I will say. Is this information, having this information earlier, going over this yesterday, was very powerful in presenting. Uh to them and and I and just having that, because then they were, you know, fascinated, but you know, I won't go into the details. But uh just thank you for being able to provide that because it's tools now that we can go in together. Wha- what I would like to see. So I think one of the biggest things that I took from, there's a lot of information we take from this. But that eighty-two percent of uh from the residents saying, yes, let's let's put incentive program together.
Eighty-eight percent.
Eighty-eight, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I am really bad with that. Uh eighty-eight percent, which is better. We, that uh that's, I think that should be our next step, is, all right, let's let's partner with. Let's partner with Goodman, right? Let's partner with Lewis, let's partner with Summit, Orbis, all these retailers, and let's put skin in the game, right? Let's let's make it easier on them to bring in these quality restaurants and let's let's start digging in to see, hey, what is it that we can do? To make it easier on them and also to make it where the bottom line for them makes sense, right? It 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 needs to be a collaboration effort on all of us to make sense, so. Uh I'm glad we're going this direction. I I think it's the absolute right direction and I and I'm very confident. Um we're we're gonna get a couple wins this year in 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 making this happen and and I think next year even. I think you're just gonna see it just start rolling in effect, so I I like it. So thank you, and thank you for the vision, Staff, I can't express enough. Um, thank you, so.
Yeah, and 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 on that note, uh Kimberly, uh Erica, myself, we're sitting today to figure out what can we do. Uh for as far as the incentive programs to help help businesses out and and stay within the legal law and. And what what it what is the gift of public funds and that kind of thing uh to support businesses. Uh coming and and spurring on that economic development, so um we 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 were given great legal advice today. And so now we're gonna put something together and have a review it in the future, hopefully we'll be able to bring it back to have a public conversation about it.
A- and just to add on to that, I know that. Uh Staff will probably look into it as we we talked with other restaurants that. Um I think it was San Bernardino County that has a program that they were able to help certain restaurants um with. Uh with different incentives to get in, and so I don't know if if Riverside County has anything like that.
It was it was Los Angeles County and they 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 helped the Meat Cellar uh do some renovations on a blighted building um and and. And then they had to demonstrate a a certain amount of full-time equivalent employees over a three-year period. And then they they either had loan forgiveness or they had a a grant uh opportunity, and so there were there were um financial. Uh triggers for them to receive their grants uh after the fact, after they did the work, so um that was. Uh so I don't know if there's any county grants or any help that we can get even again from. Um the Assembly Member's Office on any grants to help bring these these smaller businesses or smaller restaurants into the the community would be great. Councilmember Yau.
That's exactly what I was gonna say was that, um, you know, it uh that financial incentives. It will be great if we can provide them, but it doesn't have to come from our city too. You know, we have state or um state representatives here. Who maybe we can work together and try to identify some grants, and I know Assembly Member Sabrina Cervantes was able to secure. Um along with Assembly Member Sharon Cork Silva was able to secure some grants money for a small businesses owner for minorities and women um last. Legislation session, so hopefully we can work together and get something going on and use that money for um local businesses.
Any other comments from the council? One of the first slides, we we talk about the leakage of being approximately seventy-one million. I think that's powerful because that's just attributed to restaurant leakage. I know when I go out with my wife for dinner, it doesn't happen as often as it should, but uh don't tell her that, even though this is recorded. Um but uh when I go out with my wife for dinner, when we don't have the kids, we're gonna do something else other than just go to dinner. We're gonna go do our grocery shopping, or we're gonna go see a movie, or we're gonna go do something else, so when you see the seventy-one million dollars in restaurant leakage. I'd be curious to see what our additional leakage is of um the additional entertainment uh leakage that we would have. As a result of people eating out at other places. So I think this is powerful. Um. Like Brandon said, thank you to Staff for doing this. Thank you for putting this together. Thank you for um presenting this and for for. Sharing this information. I know it was a lot of work, a lot of hard work. We really appreciate it. Um but then also, I know we have some of our our developers here, or some of those from the development community. Thank you for being here and hearing this information. Um this will be shared up on our website soon, right? So that residents, developers can can take a look at this. Um.
Yes, following the planning commission meeting, it will be on our website and social media platforms.
Great, thank you. And we we, one of the things that uh we strive for is to partner with our our developers, so we look forward to doing what we can on our part. As a city, working with the developers um to making this happen, so thank you everyone for being here. And with that being said, did any of our. Um I guess, one last chance for public comment, any of our developers or or any of the public have any comments regarding this? If you can come up to the speaker's podium and then you can fill out a blue card, please. They'll they'll get it for you right after, yeah. And if you can just start off with stating your name for us, please.
My name is Gail Paulson. I've been a resident here about three and a half years. We used to live in Upland, and one of the things I was going to mention. For the art project is that the Lewis Family Foundation has done a lot for other communities. And you may want to speak to them about a grant for the art project, because they're they're great and I think they would be able to help.
Thank you. Last call, any comments regarding this item specifically, the restaurant feedback survey? All right, great, thank you. And this is just a receive and file, correct? We don't need to take any action? All right, well, thank you. That concludes item nine point five. We will move on to.
If you wanna provide any direction for us to 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 come back to, you're more than welcome to provide that feedback to me either now or later in two-two-one. And so that we so we can, so.
Yeah, you can't, one one point of direction, you can't show pictures like that uh in a.
Without sample feeding you, before feeding, sorry.
Yeah, I would have maybe one direction if council is is in uh would be in agree agreement of it. Is just to come back with what type of incentives that we could put in place um that are out there. Maybe we kinda put that together and and then they might be the next step.
Do I have a kind of a five-head nod that you wanna bring an incentive package back for restaurants?
I would agree, and I think we have a uh, do we have a consensus among the council?
Yep.
Yes, um but I would also love to include our Assembly Member Office and then also our State Senator's Office if possible.
Okay.
Yeah, if they agree to it, of course, I'm not gonna for- force them to take part, yeah.
I think we have a consensus to look further into that. Thank you. Moving on to item ten, city manager report, city staff report. Mister Jones, please.
Yes, um I have um some very unfortunate news to share with you tonight. Um our great police chief uh uh and RSO captain Ha- Dan Hedge. Um it is being reassigned um to the which uh. The Robert Presley Detention Center, and not as an inmate, but as a captain. He he clarified that he's not going there as an inmate, um but with change in leadership at the RSO. Uh um uh the shuffle has begun, as we've seen throughout the county and and um so. Uh we will be uh learning about our new uh captain and meeting our new uh captain, our our police chief. Next week, um and um Captain Hedge has graciously. Uh said that he will help make that transition as smoothly as possible for us and for the new captain. Um and um he he has all the confidence in this new captain's ability to help us achieve our. Our 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 law enforcement uh desires here in Eastvale, and so um. But I can't thank Captain Hedge, he he's been instrumental, uh you know, in in the DUI fatality that we had last. Uh last year, um. Uh last year, um we have good news, we uh, we uh um brought the, the, the person into, at the, to custody. Um last night, so that, that was good to put, bring closure for the family, family for that uh fatality. And then um they also worked really diligently with their cry uh um central homicide unit. To bring closure to the homicide that we had here in our town, and, and every day, I, you know. I received texts and emails and, and ca- calls from Dan to keep me in abreast of public safety issues in our community. Twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, he's always available to us, and, and he does an amazing job. Um so I can't thank him enough for his service um as, as our police chief here in, in the city of Eastville, so um thank you. Very, very much, Dan.
Yeah, I wanna thank you for those words, if you, if you said that about a month ago, I would have thought a little bit different about leaving, but. Uh I appreciate those words.
He volunteered, he didn't volunteer.
Um I, you know, I, I, I have a great opportunity right now, um being the commander of the Corrections Division um. At the Robert Presley Detention Center Riverside, one of our jail facilities, so I'm looking forward to the challenge. Uh but I assure you that you're not being left empty-handed. Uh Lieutenant Tim Warren, I will still be here as Assistant Chief of Police, and, and you're all very familiar with him and his accomplishments with the city. Uh it, it, it's been an honor for me to serve this community. Um I, I don't think I, I, I've made it well-known that I love this community, and I, I appreciate everything that you've done, that I've witnessed. You do for this community as well as your selection for the city manager, it's been an, an honor to work with him. And uh my replacement actually works for me right now, he's currently a lieutenant with the Hoopa Valley Station, so. I've worked with him for the last ye- year, year and a half at this, at my facility, so. I'm very uh, uh very knowledgeable about his accomplishments and his ability to, to run the Hoopa Valley Station, I have all the. Complete confidence in him, so I think he'll be a perfect fit for the community, um but again, I'm only a phone call away, I've, I've talked to Brian and. Um whatever he needs, I'm still available, um on duty or off duty, um. Like I said, I love the community and, and I'll still be a part of it some way, I'm sure. And um I'm gonna come back on, I believe, the next city council meeting, and I'll introduce the, uh the new chief of police for the city of Eastville. Thank you.
Well, you have the mic, Captain Hedge, can, can you also elaborate a little bit on, on the ten additional hours in the motor officer?
A- a- absolutely, I, I, I uh don't wanna leave any loose ends with the uh fatal traffic collision arrest and the uh homicide arrest. Um, we have uh several new deputies, not new deputies, but trainees. That are be, gonna be starting at the Hoopa Valley Station on the thirty-first of January. Uh we're gonna have, I believe, six of them total, and I've already earmarked two of them. Um if it takes to, uh whatever it's gonna take to accomplish the one hundred hours. Um so we already have the bodies coming to the station, um the only drawback is that they will be in the field training officer program. For a minimum of sixteen weeks, however, the city will not get billed for that training, and we will have them available. Um for as soon as they're off to, to assign them to the city of uh Eastville. In, in addition, uh we have been researching uh motor schools. For a, a motor selection, and the difficulty we've had is that the city, I'm sorry, the county of San Bernardino. Has the motor facility that we typically send our, our, our officers to, officers to, to be trained locally. Uh they are temporarily closed down, and they've been closed down for a couple of months now. Uh we found the next um training class uh to be up north uh by the Highway Patrol in April. And so we reserved a posi- a spot for uh the upcoming motor uh deputy to be trained um for the city of Eastville. So um I know it's been a while, I apologize for that, and I think we've talked about the, the turmoil within the department and the funding uh issues that we've had and the. Uh the lack of hiring that we've had for quite a while, um the wheels are turning now, we've been hiring. Uh we just received seven new trainees that just got off training about a week and a half ago. Um however, those bodies, I need to replenish bodies that we just have not recuperated, and when we lost them in the past, so. This next round of, of uh deputies coming, um I'm able to tell you that we're able to uh set aside enough to maintain those one hundred hours. And then um we already have that motor position uh locked on for April for the class, however, if. I've been working on getting a tr- uh a, a transfer from another facility. Of a experienced motor, so we wouldn't have to go through the training, uh we're still trying to do that, however, we have that locked on just in case. And then we'll have a position selected for that.
How long is that training?
Uh, two weeks.
Oh, okay.
Two weeks, and then they'll come back and they'll ride with the current motor for a, a while to make sure that they're comfortable within the community. I mean, they, side by side, absolutely, yeah, not, not, not behind them.
Before you go on, um Brian, I think it's important to note, especially as, as Captain Hedge is leaving. That we have had unfortunately some, some major crimes that have occurred um in, in the last year, whatever. But the most important thing to note is those are not unsolved crimes. Um and I think that goes to show great leadership that we have, and we truly appreciate that. Um it is devastating to have major crimes happen in the city, but it is so comforting to know that those major crimes are solved. Um and solved in a timely manner, um I can't imagine how these families feel, but as a community, it, it brings us a lot of comfort to know that our. Our police department is taking care of us, and unfortunate circumcens- circumstances happen. But it brings us comfort to know that our, our police department is going to find those people, so thank you guys, you guys do a great job and. And we wish you the best, and we will uh, we'll say our official goodbye next city council meeting, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just, ju- just so everybody knows, uh to solve that homicide case, they were working twenty-four seven, shift after shift after shift. There were a number of people working on that all the time, so um while we weren't hearing some things, they were working really hard. It's like a duck on the water, but paddling really fast underneath, and they were, they were paddling really hard and chasing down every lead on that case, so. Um, um, I, they were keeping me informed uh of where they were going, but uh. Um we couldn't share all of that information with the community, but uh they, they were definitely working really diligently, so um. Uh and they brought that case as they promised, as almost a Christmas gift for me, so I really appreciate that, so. Um I'm gonna let, I'm gonna pass the torch over to Olivia for any uh communications updates. Um, we have a big event on Monday that she will share as well.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, um just a couple of updates. We are looking forward to hosting the League of California Cities. Um general meeting, um general uh division meeting on Monday, January fourteenth, at the Eastville Community Center. And are very thankful for J C S D sponsoring um the use of the facility, and. We're looking forward to having a taste of Eastville, which many of you have experienced at our um past state of the city events. And it's gonna be a really great opportunity to showcase the city of Eastville and welcome. Um local city managers and city management into um our home, so. I'm really looking forward to that, and then we um are excited to launch our much anticipated community. Satisfaction study that will launch next week, um for those of you that have been following along. Um you already know what this is about, and for those of you that have not heard about it yet, this is really gonna allow. Um the city to scientifically gather data um based on residents' feedback and satisfaction for city services. Um and just overall um satisfaction of um, of how we're doing things, and we wanna hear from you, so. We encourage you to participate in the survey, um a sample size of one thousand residents um by random will be selected to. Um participate, and we hope that you guys will um take um a few minutes to participate in this, it may be a phone interview. Uh um or if a online survey works better for your schedule, we appreciate the feedback and thank you in advance for participating in that. And this will help us as we move forward with planning um and decision-making and decisions um. For budget purposes and, and so forth, so. Resident feedback and engagement is a, a top priority to us, and it will continue to be, and we just appreciate all of your engagement. On social media, I get to talk to my colleagues often about um engagement and um social media engagement particularly. And I'm always proud to share um all of the engagement that we do get on social media. It's um, it's one thing to communicate information from um lo- local government. Um but to be able to engage and to have feedback is really important too, so we appreciate all of that, that's all I have.
And I have no further updates.
Thank you. We will move on to, if there's no further updates from staff, we will move on to city council communications. Once again, we'll start off just going through our um committees, and then we'll go down the line on specific um council members. League of California Cities.
Olivia covered it, um looking forward to the league coming, being hosted here in the city of Eastville for the division meeting. Uh both um if, if it still holds true, my understanding is that uh our new supervisor Spiegel. Will be speaking along with Bianco, our new sheriff, so that'll be great. Do you want me to continue or with the other ones, or?
Um, let's go through the line, so I.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Just do this, speaking of League of California Cities, um not to put any of our. Council members on the spot, but is everyone hopefully planning on being there for that? Okay, strongly encourage everyone to be there, um I think our. Good portion of our staff's gonna be there, and as many of us that can. SCAG. I guess you will continue.
Awesome, uh so SCAG, Southern California Association of Government, um with the holiday, uh it, we didn't have our. Regional council meeting at the beginning of the month, it's usually the first Thursday. Um but what we did have was an audit committee, um those are infrequent, that took place on Tuesday, sit on there. Um clean bill health from the auditors. Um next Tuesday, Legislative Communications and Membership Committee, it's gonna be taking place, um. I will be at the SCAG Riverside office, um if anybody would like to come join, starts eight-thirty in the morning, and um. It should be interesting, they'll be talking about uh some of the, what to expect with this coming legislative cycle. Um the state legislature, we have had a, 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 uh, well, a supermajority is now in place up in the state legislature. And um last year, there were four thousand some odd bills um examined, uh reviewed. Um this, the next two years, this legislative cycle looks to be uh that. There are some plans that are in place, we will see how those are implemented. And um already several hundred bills have been submitted um for review. Or have been submitted even before the start of session, um so that completes, as soon as that meeting is. Complete, I'll be able to report out on it at our next meeting.
Great, thank you. W R C O G.
Yeah, I, I filled in for Joe as an, as an alternate uh to the W R C O G meeting on Monday, uh really no, there was no. You know, huge announcements because there was just so much turnover from the election, so there were so many new seats, so part of the agenda item was just. Discussing what is our W R C O G, what do we do, and, and the role they play a- a- as our, as a regional entity. So that was it, but there's no really, no, no announcements from them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other than introductions.
We'll continue with you at uh Riverside Transit Agency.
Yeah, tomorrow we have our, our T Now chapter meeting, so that, that is, the T Now chapter meeting is basically a local version of R T A where we kind of have. Uh where the city of Norco, Eastville, Hoopa Valley, and Corona, we just talked about local transit, I actually will bring up. I will bring up the two concerns, one from Keith who actually attends the T Now uh meeting, and, and then Mazin, I believe his name, so I'll bring up his issue and concern. And then later we have our, our T A uh Board of Directors meeting at the end of the month, so, yeah.
Thank you. Western Community Energy is myself, uh we had a meeting today, we're still moving forward on that, the, the savings is still roughly around. Two, three percent, it really depends on what the C P U C determines for the final. Um P C I charge, and I know there's a lot of acronyms, but that's the, the, basically the buyout charge. That um the customers get stuck with, so right now we're looking between two to three percent. Um today, we, like I said, we had a meeting, it was just a very short meeting, the main thing was just our conflict of interest code that we adopted. Um one of the things that we did briefly talk about is we're constantly looking for jurisdictions that may be willing to join, because it can be an economy of scales. Situation, so if you guys hear of any um jurisdictions that may possibly be interested, um um let me know. Uh Marietta was kind of on the fence, Temecula, um Elsinore. Uh this was all kind of before election time, so they were kind of on the fence, and we're gonna reach back out to all of those jurisdictions to see. Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control.
Let's see, uh at the Northwest uh Mosquito and Vector Control District, uh. At our last meeting, we said goodbye to our current director, now former director, uh Major Dillon. I don't know if any of you have ever heard of him, but uh he's uh, he's an amazing guy, he's brilliant, he's been in the, he's. He was described to me by somebody as the Freddie Mercury of vertector ecology. Yeah, he's, somebody went to a uh um conference with him last year to Europe, and they said that uh, you know, when they would go on a lunch break. They couldn't go because he gets swarmed by all the other scientists, because they all wanna pick his brain. And so he's gonna be, it's gonna be a big loss for the district. Uh but where he, his replacement is gonna be a gentleman by the name of Bill Van Dyke, uh he's been with the district for quite some time. I like him a lot, I think he's gonna do a great job, uh Dillon handpicked him, Major Dillon, uh Doctor Dillon picked, picked him, so. Uh I think we're gonna be fine, uh one of the, we had an audit recently, and uh the annual audit, and we passed with flying colors. And basically the only agenda item we discussed was uh we're gonna start looking into investing in some drone technology to help out uh. With vector control, it uh, right now, whenever these ecologists go out and they wanna find out where uh. Some mosquitoes are breeding on a large property, they have to actually physically go in there and search. Uh with a drone, they can actually uh fly over and, and look for spots, and when they do identify something. These drones are capable of actually spraying the pesticides that are needed too, so. It's a, it's, it's gonna be a good investment, uh so that's, that was our uh vector control meeting.
Thank you. R C T C, Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Yes, um R C T C had the meeting this morning, and um it was the first time sitting in as the um. The, the representative from the city, um actually a, a big um expenditure was done today, hundred and twenty-six million dollars for. Um there is the climbing lanes on the sixty, it's gonna take thirty-three months to put in. Um they're gonna expand those out, once it's done, it's gonna be awesome, there is gonna be some time there though that. Uh there will be problems, there will be alternate routes, of course, on the ten or um down the seventy-nine, um but. Through the sixty there, that will be difficult coming west for a couple of month period of time. Um hundred, but hundred and twenty-six million dollars approved, ready to go, projects in the works, so thirty-three months from now, should be good.
So, it'll be a bear while construction's there, but it'll be sweet when it's complete, right?
Absolutely.
I, I think that, I think they have to, I think they have to hire Dennis. Uh Regional Con- Conservation Agency.
Sorry to disappoint all of you, I know you guys were looking forward to Species of the Month, but I, I couldn't make it because of. Uh because of a commitment that um that I had, like that I had committed to even before the election, so. But I'll be back next month, definitely with a species of the month.
Well, to clarify, I'm probably the only one that's really interested in this, because I love it, so yeah.
Alright, uh J C S D Parks Commission, nothing's gone on.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, there is one big change in the Parks Commission meeting, um it has been cited, decided by the, the board of, uh, the J C S D board to meet quarterly. Uh instead of monthly, which I actually think it's a, it's a good thing, so. Uh it actually is record, there's just not enough items on an agenda monthly to make it a productive meeting, so they will be just switching to quarterly meetings.
Yeah. I- i- if I could, uh the, the, the R C A, the, the Species of the Month, uh just so everybody knows. You guys can go check this out on their website, I, I came across this the other day while I was perusing their website, there's. Yeah, whoever does that in their spare time, I do apparently, and it was actually um, it, it's a plant this year, or this month, it's the Pelamar Monkey Flower. And it, it's actually very attractive, it's pink, purple, how would you describe that?
It it looks like a um.
Anyway, they're very rare and they are an annual herb native native to California and Baja California. They're small tubular in shape and they bloom in April to June, so go try and find them. They're pretty cool, coming up. Santa Rosa Plateau, it's gonna be out, uh actually, yes, so if you haven't, and I've said this before, if you haven't done it. Make it down to the Santa Rosa Plateau for the blooming of the wildflowers. They also have some fernal ponds out there. That is a protected area administered by the R C A and um you should go check it out when it is in bloom. It's awesome.
Thank you. Last but not least, Finance Committee.
Yeah, we were not able to meet uh last month. If you noticed on on your consent calendar, there was no warrant register. So on the next consent calendar in two weeks, you it will be a kind of a duel, where we double the amount of the warrant register. So, yep, and that our meeting will be next Tuesday.
Great, thank you. Any additional comments from the council, starting down the end? Anything? Just the last quick thing, we uh we participated in a um Silver Lakes. I forget what their meeting was called.
Strategic Unveiling of Their Future?
Something, something like that, but they talked about what their what their strategic plan is in the future. Um. It was very interesting to see what their vision is for for that area. Um and I think that we can capture a lot of um. We can benefit from a lot of what they're doing, so I would like to ask staff if we can reach out to someone on their team to have them come and present. Um maybe a a a brief version of what they shared at that, but just so the full council can see, cause I think it can help us make some. Wise decisions as to what we do in our city to help capture some of that.
I've already reached out to RJ while he was on vacation.
Particular to that, but I think once you hear, there's a lot more that we can probably do within our 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 entire city to capture stuff from there, so. Yeah, so. If there is nothing further, the next meeting of the Eastville City Council will be on January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen at six thirty P M. And this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for coming.